Okay. Well, good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to this work session of Lakota Board of Education. Ms. Logan, would you please call roll?
This is Casper.
Here.
This is O'Connor.
President.
This is Schaefer.
Here.
Mr. Level.
Here. Do I have permission to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Of second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Excuse me, are we going to do the pledge?
We don't at work sessions typically. We just do them at our regular business meetings.
Okay.
Yep.
Seems like that should be included at all.
Okay. We haven't done that for the three years I've been on the board, but we can add that for the next meeting.
I really think we should.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Logan, roll call, please.
This is Schaefer.
Here.
This is O'Connor.
President.
This is the vote to approve the agenda.
Sorry.
We've already taken roll. Sorry. Yes, okay. Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
It is our first meeting as board, apparently.
Okay. This moves us on to the next item on the agenda. Board work session. So, Mr. Miller, if you would like to start with the reopening of school overview?
I would. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Level and board. Just before I get started, I asked Pam to pull our latest enrollment numbers as of this morning. Our total district enrollment is 16,822 students, not counting preschool, let's just K-12. Of those students, 13,011 are in person, and our virtual learning option is at 3,811 students. And so...
Is that a decrease for VLO?
That's about where we thought we would have it. Some ins and outs. We were close to four for a little bit, but we had some going back to traditional format.
Okay.
More still running to go VLO than coming back.
Okay.
So it's fluctuated a little bit, but I think we're in the mid twenties range. So I did want to put that out for everybody. And when you look at the numbers, it's pretty much, I don't want to say it's even because that's not the right term in terms of grade levels for VLO, but VLO is raging about 230, depending on the grade, almost 300 in some grade levels.
And how...
So we do have that going.
How does that enrollment number compare to a year ago?
Just about the same overall. I think a smidge higher. We've never hit 17 officially since I've been here, but we're pretty close. Oh, sorry. So when we start the school year, as everybody knows, we've got to stagger start by the alphabet. And we heard a lot of feedback about that in terms of maybe we should start this this way every year because it gave, we talk about relationship building. It gave people extra time to do that. It gave our kids more space, not only just this year in the COVID era, but also just to get procedures down in small groups. And last week was our first week welcoming back all students, and now we're on week three. The data that I have and I'm going to show you is from our first two weeks. And we did feedback surveys for both weeks, during week one and during week two. You can tell by the survey responses, we had about two-thirds of the same amount of responses or number of responses from week two versus week one. You can see the breakdown. It's pretty close in terms of who responded. I will tell you that the students is seven through 12, and then we have the parent guardian piece and the staff piece. So again, pretty close from week one to week two. I think we talked about this in executive team that perhaps the number is a little bit lower for week two than week one because if things are going well and you're generally satisfied, you might not take the time to fill out a survey, but not always. One of the biggest things that we talk about is safety and how well the kids felt during school the first two weeks. You take a look at the projections, so week one to week two, probably the, and again, they're fairly close where the blue is very safe, the red is pretty safe in terms of how they felt at school, and orangish-yellow would be unsafe. And so that number went up a little bit higher, probably due to everyone being back full-time, still learning what social distancing really is. But I'll tell you that masks have not been an issue for us. It's more of the spacing. If at any time you have a question or stop me, please do. And we talked about was student learning impacted by the new protocols? And a little bit, how can it not be? Blue is not at all. Red is a little bit. And then the yellow-orange is significant. And I think, again, I think that goes back to the social distancing piece as well. But you can tell there's not a big leap in any of the categories going from half-capacity to full-capacity. In terms of the daily routine for our kids and the protocols and how much impact there was, for the majority, it was a little bit. Then not at all is about the same as significant. I think depending on what group you're in or what category you're in, whether you're a parent or a student or a staff member, that obviously impacts your decision. But again, not really much change from week two to week one.
Now, would it be possible in a board update at some point just to give the breakdown to us?
Yeah.
By staff families? It'd just be interesting to see how the graphs actually...
And there really wasn't much difference in the percentages from week one to week two. But yeah, we can send that out too. And we also, we'd also talked about doing this maybe once a month.
Sure.
Similar survey too that I'm glad to bring back to the board as well.
All right.
Lunch is one of those periods that we weren't sure what that was going to look like for our kids with social distancing. And we were just talking about some of the kids are still getting used to the spacing with social distancing and getting settled into that routine. But again, not much change about impacting the lunch. The significant portion is about a quarter. Going to the mask requirement that I just alluded to before, how much impact did the face covering requirement have on your or your child's day? You can see that no big deal was the blue, bluish-purple. Red was challenging, but we know they are needed. Orange was forgot they were on. And then green was, we understand they're mandated by the governor, but people opposed them. So that number actually went down in week two, but again, fairly close. But it has not really been that much of an issue. There's pockets or singleton, so to speak, at the buildings in terms of an issue with a mask. But when we went to the first day, the first two days when we went to all the buildings, there was one building that had two kids that didn't have a mask, and they said they didn't know they were required. So it's not been a big issue for us. But again, you always have pockets and things can change from day to day. I like, I would be one of the most positive parts. And we're going to talk to in a second about one of the biggest challenges. But the most positive parts of the week were the kids wanting to be with their peers in both weeks. And then students being with their teachers and the support and staff and caring staff were also the most positive parts of the week. You just kind of see that, right? When you see the kids back in the building, it's kind of nice to have that again. I know it looks different, but we're all in that same mode. Again, the percentages really haven't changed over just one week's time. The biggest challenges for the week would be the physical distancing again. Not enough opportunities for mask breaks. And that's something that we've been working on as a team and administration about how to have more of those for our kids and what do they look like? And then hand washing, not enough opportunities for hand washing. So these are our points that we would like to see get better.
When you, when we talk about mask breaks and not enough opportunities, do you, when you look at the data, is that in pockets based on division or school? Or is that kind of overall meaning? Do you hear that more at the high school level, more at the elementary level, early childhood?
I've heard it more. I don't really have the data on that, but I personally have heard that more at the upper grade levels.
Yeah. I was saying because the feedback anecdotally that I've gotten from staff at the lower grade levels is that they could probably take some of the mask breaks away. Like, they felt like they were taking so many. There were so many built into their rhythm.
Right.
That they felt like they were transitioning so much, and the kids were kind of like, we're fine, you know? So I don't know. Again, is that a divisional thing? How does that fall across the organization?
It's more, it's more of the older kids. Yep.
We heard that today when we were out in buildings that the high school kids are having trouble getting breaks in, mask breaks in.
It's just not something we're used to. And again, the younger kids, they're used to recess and things like that. And I think that kind of lends itself to it. But so we have to have points that we need to work on. And clearly, these are some of ours. We talked overall about the perception of how the school district has done. Again, we have three categories. Blues has done a great job preparing the school year for in-person students. Orange-ish, I guess, red is going in the right direction, but improvements are still needed. And then needs to make significant improvements for in-person learning. Again, pretty close. You can see the uptick in needs to make significant improvements. That might be because of full capacity now versus week one. But that's really not even full capacity when you think about it because we have 23-ish percent of our kids not in the buildings.
Right.
So we do have some more space. But again, pretty consistent overall.
And it looks like we didn't offer that second question to the VLO group.
That's a separate survey that we're doing for VLO. And actually, I think that comes down today or tomorrow.
This is just the in-person.
Yeah, this is just in-person. Yep.
Will you be sending?
And they started a little bit behind the in-person. So that was the delay.
Sending it out once you get it?
Yeah, I can talk about it at actually, we're meeting on the 14th, I think, too. In terms of our reporting protocols, and this has come up, and there's a dashboard that we've been working on, but we're waiting on final requirements. And I think they come Wednesday from the Ohio Department of Health. But we did, as the board knows, started a COVID response team, our CRT, in terms of the reporting process. We use that team to report the positive cases through our school nurses or the building administrators. And then we share that information with Butler County Health Department. The health department is having some growth spurts. They're adding, they've added some staff that are new to the position. We have a point person that is linked to Lakota schools. In fact, she's linked to most of the schools. But I still call Jenny Baller when I have a question just because we have that relationship already going. They're having some issues in terms of who should do the tracing, and we think it should be them, and they agree with that. Just there's some, some things that they have to straighten out with some new staff through an onboarding process. So we hashed that out with them today. The health department notifies our COVID response team about the information that should be communicated to staff and parents and whether or not there's quarantine that needs to happen and whether the risk is high, medium, and low. And then we put out those communications with the building administrator and obviously Betsy's office, and then cleaning when need be. And I'm going to talk a little bit now about our cases that we've had. So through our first week, we had one positive student. We had one presumed positive at the Creightonness Academy and one presumed positive at East. I believe they were not. But I did want to put that up there for what we were dealing with with the first week. Last week, we had zero. And then you can see what presumed positive means up there. But again, we've had those cases come back. We've had quarantine of some students and staff. And I'm worried, I had been worried more so last week than I am this week, that that's something that might, at some point in a couple weeks or months, make us consider remote if we don't have the staff to make sure we're functioning at full capacity. Right now, we're okay. A week ago, I was a little bit concerned. This week, I'm not as concerned. But again, this is just the first two weeks. We do have some cases that we're checking out that were reported earlier today. That's not reflected here, but I'll make sure that you get that information, too.
How is our subpool comparatively speaking to previous years?
It's down. And I thought we would be in a much better position because a lot of schools have already started in hybrid or in remote. But I think overall, people are not joining the subpool because they have their own issues with families and kids, and so they're not doing that as much. So it's, it's down.
Okay.
A little bit. Yep. Linda?
I believe that Governor Dewine issued some type of directive this past week about making public information available regarding this and what our numbers are looking like. Do we put a mechanism in place for that?
Yeah, he should, they're supposed to put out the final recommendations on Wednesday for that.
Okay. So do we plan to do something along the lines of, for instance, what Mason is doing?
Yeah, it'll be similar to that. That's, and it's something that we've been working on. We're just waiting for the final guidance because we don't want to put something out and have to pull it back again.
That'd be surprising.
Yeah, right. And I'm still waiting, I'm still waiting for more music guidelines. They did the venue and event space, but not so much on the music, but...
Do you have a timeframe on when you expect that?
I expected it last week. Not trying to be funny. I'm just, that's what I was told. That's what I was told.
Yeah. And all we really got was the professional...
Yes.
Directions. We didn't get the school direction.
Correct.
Man, I'd like to ask that when you have the survey results for the VLO option, that you would go ahead and say?
Yeah, when we're done. Yep.
Getting a lot of comments about it.
Okay.
Are you going to continue doing the weekly surveys for families? Or what is the plan in that?
For this one, we thought we'd dial it down to probably once a month and less things change with the number of cases or staff, with staff or students. So we're thinking towards the end of September for the next one.
With the ability to write in answers, did you gather anything that was useful from those?
There were a couple, couple highlights for us, like individual buildings had concerns about individual staff members. There were a ton of attaboys and thank you for doing this and giving us a voice, that type of thing. But nothing that I think wasn't reflected in this summary for individual buildings or groups. We had some issues, and I think maybe, somebody have heard about it, with bus drivers and masking. And so we've been work, Chris has been working with Peterman about that. It can be a hindrance when they're trying to drive in C. So I get that. And we were waiting until we were at full capacity as to see if we can have a row or two behind the driver empty so that's less of a concern. And so I haven't heard back yet on, on that from Chris. But that's something that came up too in the surveys, but something that we had heard about. And our drivers are to be masked up for pickup and drop-off. But when they're driving, it can be a visual impairment. So we're okay with them pulling it down then. Anybody else for now? Again, this is something where appreciate all the team's effort and the teachers and staff understanding. And it's just a great deal of anxiety built up around this. But once the kids came back and staff came back, I thought people did a pretty good job and sort of like, okay, we can deal with this. Once the reality hits and people in their bodies in the building, I think that really helps.
It was really interesting today that when we were in some buildings, that principals are saying that some of the protocols and some of the new plans they have in place, that once the pandemic is over and it's back to kind of normal, there are procedures that they want to keep in place.
Yeah.
It's just, they said more efficient on how they're doing business. So we thought that was really interesting.
That is good.
So...
I just got notified that our subpool is down about 20%.
20%? Wow.
Yeah. So I think, I was just going to say, I think we've all had the opportunity to be in the buildings. And I think that the feedback has been very positive, that everyone's been very happy to see the kids and, and that it's going much better than everyone's fears have been, for the most part, allayed and that they've been very happy with how things have gone, even at the early childhood schools, at how well the students have done with following the new protocols. And, and everyone was very pleased and happy to see the students again and the energy of the buildings and with the staff, so.
Yeah, and I think they're getting, the kids are getting used to it, you know? And the adults are too. But the kids have been, it's been overall pretty good.
Both early childhood buildings said, you know, we talked about that was our biggest concern. Will early childhood students keep the mask on? They said that's been amazing, amazing. They haven't had any issues.
One early childhood school said only two masks have been forgotten the whole time. I thought that was amazing.
I just know from my daughter's perspective, which is fascinating. You know, she wears a mask all day, and then we go to soccer in the evening, and they have to wear a mask on the sideline. But when they get on the field of play, they can take it off. And the other day, she's like, I want to wear my mask while I play. I'm like, no, really, take it off, right? Like, it's going to be hot. She wanted to wear it more. And I'm thinking, they don't, and when we were doing the survey, it was interesting because, you know, we asked her as we were going through, like, tell us about the mask. And it was one of those things, and I've heard this from other kids and families, is she's like, oh, I forget it's on. And it's just kind of like, it's part of my wardrobe. It's what I do. And we just, but I think that it just, it goes back to, and we said this from the very, very beginning, our teachers are masters at environment, and they're masters at creating a space where kids feel welcome and they feel like they want to be there and engaged. And, you know, I had no worries really about them doing that within that room. And I think once, to your point, once the kids got in there, once they figured out that environment, they knew what was expected of them because things were changing every other day. Once the kids showed up, it kind of worked.
Yeah.
And so kudos to our staff and our teachers and our parents, both VLO and in-person. You know, our VLO parents, they're part of this game, too. And it's, it's, it's difficult for them. It's challenging, and they're, they're learning as well on the families. And so both in-person and VLO, kudos to our families and our staff who have stepped up to essentially build a whole new way of educating students in less than six months.
Right.
So let's do it. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Okay, hearing done. We'll move on to item B, which is the proposed Milliken interchange. Ms. Logan?
So this is just a preliminary discussion to just kind of let you know that it will be coming our way. We had a meeting last week with Liberty Township Administration, and they let us know that they are moving along in the process. They are hoping to have all the paperwork and the T's crossed and the I's dotted by the end of December, which is, is fast approaching.
Sure.
So we will be formally notified by the township probably next month. And so when that comes, I will, you know, we'll, we'll move forward with it. But basically, what is happening is the existing TIF, it's a county TIF. They have the ability to extend an existing TIF for an additional 30 years. That's what they're planning on doing. And using proceeds from that to finance the Milliken Way interchange. So on board docs, I, I put the document out there, but I also have copies for those who like paper, if you would like the presentation. More to come. But, you know, I think we've, we've had conversations about this before, but it looks like it's, it's really happening. And so once we get formally notified, I'll let you know. But we wanted to pass along the information that we received just so you have the information we have.
And you remain in point of contact so information will flow through you to us as we move forward with this?
Correct. And Kristen has been good in keeping us updated along the way. And I have no doubt she'll continue to do that.
Okay, great. Questions?
Thank you for letting us know.
Okay. Moving on. That moves us to item C, which is board member appointment. Just to fill the community in for those that are watching that maybe haven't read the news the past week or are noticing that Mr. Parnell is not up here with us. Mr. Parnell, last Thursday submitted a letter of resignation to the Board of Education, and we acted in an emergency meeting later that day to accept his resignation. Today's discussion, the board level is going to be talking through the appointment process. I want to start really quick by reading board policy so that we, as a board, kind of understand what our policy reads in regards to the appointment process. And then Ms. Logan has these binders that she'll pass out, and we'll talk through a little bit about the process in general. But I just thought it was important that we start out with the policy because that's kind of our guiding document and how we're going to operate. And obviously, we, we dovetail that into documents that are out there in our legal process as well. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I do think it's important after item H on here I start. It says, "Whenever a vacancy occurs, the board shall fill the vacancy at its next regular or special meeting, but not earlier than 10 days after the vacancy occurs. The board shall take the following steps to fill the vacancy. A, the board shall seek qualified and interested candidates from the community through the news media, word of mouth, and contacts with appropriate organizations. B, all applicants are to submit a notice of their interest and other related information in writing to the board president. And C, the board may interview selected candidates to ascertain their qualifications and interest. Appointment by the board to fill vacancies shall be by majority vote of the remaining members of the board. If the board fails to appoint a member to its board within 30 days after the vacancy occurs, the probate court of the county, upon being advised of the failure to fill the vacancy, shall act as the board and perform the duties upon the board. The newly appointed board members selected to fill vacancies shall serve the shorter of the following periods." And it goes on to talk about that. "This person will fill the rest of Mr. Parnell's term, which will go to November of 20, or I'm sorry, December 31st of 2021." Okay? So I just thought that was good to read. Ms. Logan, would you mind passing around the binders? Put your mask up. Actually, we should probably all mask up while she's delivering those since she'll be within six feet. And when you get this binder, we're going to start off, and I'll kind of go over the contents of it, why they're delivering them. So in coordination with the board policy, conversation with our legal and the resources Mrs. O'Connor provided to us from OSBA. OSBA is the Ohio School Boards Association. They are a professional organization, and they have a ton of great information that really helps guide a lot of our processes and procedures that we do. Mrs. O'Connor was nice enough to pass the toolkit along to us. And so as we read board policy, as we looked at OSBA toolkit, and we looked, we talked to legal, we decided that we'd bring forth to the board the procedures in place that they recommend. So if you want to flip to the first tab, the black tab in the binder, So if you want to flip to the first tab, the black tab in the binder, it's a calendar. Now remember, we are, we are held to a legal timeline here. And so, we had to sit down, Ms. Logan and I, she was nice enough to sit down and we really mapped out the 30 days to look at what current meetings we had on the books. Where the 10 days and the 20 days and the 30 days would land. And so, the timeline that we're putting in front of you is, is this. Beginning tomorrow on September 1st, we propose that the application process begins and that application process will extend for one week, closing at midnight on Tuesday, September 8th. On Wednesday, September 9th, if needed, we will have a special board meeting and that will give the board an opportunity in executive session, which is permitted, to review the candidates that sent, select, or that had submitted an application, my apologies. On the 12th and 13th, which is a Saturday and Sunday, we would have the option then to interview any potential candidates that we would like to move forward in the interview process. Obviously, depending on the number of candidates that we have submitting applications, we can decide if we want to interview the collective whole. And if that's the case, we wouldn't really need to meet on the 9th. Or if we have 200 people that want to be appointed, we would need the 9th to then take a step back and to review the applications because obviously, we couldn't interview 200 people. If we follow that timeline, on the 14th, we would be in a position to point this person to the Board of Education. And that would be by a vote of the majority of the board in order to move forward from that point. The other thing I want to mention is that I believe that it's really important that we as a board see community input as we start to look at and think about the type of appointee that we want to serve with us. Remember, this isn't an elected position, this is an appointed position. So what we want to make sure we're doing is really seeking not only the input of the community, but what we believe is in the best interest of the board to move forward for the next year and change. And so, what I'm suggesting is that we launch a thought exchange that would begin in the same period of time that the application process runs. And the simple question there would be, what qualifications do you believe are important or necessary for the appointee of the Board of Education to have? And so, Betsy is going to word that way better in the Communications Department. But that thought exchange will go out with the course of that week. And then that's going to help us as we start to look at the applicants to better understand where the community's at, what they believe, and then from our perspective as well, around the value that a person could add to the work we do currently. So if we were to appoint the member on the 14th, the proposal is that we then have them take seat on the 28th. There are reasons for that, in my mind. If we put them on the 14th, it's a quick turnaround and they haven't had a lot of experience understanding how we operate, meaning the protocols of the meetings. Just like us, when we got elected in November, Jenny and Matt worked with us from November to January to understand proper rules of order and things like that. And so, what we could do between the 14th and the 28th is help onboard that appointee and then have them take seat at the work session on the 28th. Also, on the 28th, what I'm suggesting is that we have OSBA join us either virtually or in person to do a brief kind of boardsmanship 101, just helping the whole board calibrate. What we hear from OSBA all the time is that what we have to recognize is that whenever a board gets a minimum of one new member, it's a new board. And so, how we function as a board and understand how we operate is critical. And so, having them do the work that they've done with us in the past, I think would be a benefit. And it would help us as we move in to some really significant work that we have going on here as a board. So I'll submit that to the board for a conversation. Really quick though, I want to tell you what else is in this binder. Obviously, it's the toolkit that Mrs. O'Connor had given us from OSBA. So it really talks about how the application process, which we will be developing, so it can be submitted online. So people don't have to mail in the application, they'll be able to go online, fill it out and submit it. Just for ease and interest, that way it doesn't, there's not a ton of barriers in place, if that makes sense. And then, the last thing I'll share with you is that there's a list of questions in this packet as well for in-person interviews. And what I'd submit to the board is that we review those questions. Obviously, we can't ask people 18 questions, that would be a little intense. So what I would submit is that we, as a group, maybe review these, think about our top five and then we submit what we believe are the top five. And then I can kind of correlate those together and then we can come up with maybe five, five to eight questions that we want to ask based on this sheet. What I like and what, when we spoke with legal, what we felt good about this is that it's a firm process. It's used across the state. It gives really good guidance on how to run your timelines and what to do. And so, Jenny, myself, Matt and legal felt that this was the best process that we could bring board for the board to consider this evening. So I'll stop talking and let the board discuss at this point.
Brad, as we get ready to do the thought exchange, could you explain to the community what our function is as a board member? What are responsibilities, in a nutshell, just that we hire a superintendent and a treasurer? We're responsible for policy, that kind of?
Yeah, and actually, I was, Betsy, I kind of went down that path because I thought, you know, if they're going to be doing the thought exchange, to be able to have just an overview of, these are the roles and responsibilities of a board. So as people, I think a lot of people assume that we are management.
Right, exactly.
And we're not management, we're governance, which means that we do, we sit above policy and we have two employees, we have the superintendent and we have the treasurer. And so, obviously, I can't go into an hour conversation around the role of the board. But I do, I do think that if,
As we get ready to do the thought exchange.
Yeah, and again, I'll work with Betsy to give kind of a high-level overview. But because we sit in governance, it's important for our community to understand that we don't get in the weeds. It's not our job to run the district, it's our job to ensure that our competent leaders have the ability to lead under the guidance and policy and procedures that we've set forth for them to lead under. Of course, that includes finance and human resource approval and things like that.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm looking at Betsy, she's making notes, I wonder if she,
I know, Betsy's furiously writing.
Great.
I have a few thoughts and questions. First of all, thank you for the time and the effort that's gone into putting this together. Really appreciate it being done on short notice. I think we do need to remember, I believe the best I could ascertain that it's been 30 years since this situation happened last. And so, we're not looking at any current history to provide us with precedent. We do need to remember that this will be four people making this decision for representation on a board when it's normally made by voters within a block of 100,000 residents in two townships. And I think it's really important that our first and foremost principles are that it's fair, transparent and open to our public. I think we owe that to our taxpayers, to our students, to our businesses and to our residents and especially to our voters. Because our voters are going to have a board member that they did not select. I have some questions about the particulars here from the details that you provided, Brad, and perhaps some alternative suggestions. And again, I really am aiming for a well-defined process that's very easy for people to understand. So we're opening the application process, I'd like to talk about that first, the calendar. And closing it on the 8th, which is almost three weeks out from how long we actually have before somebody has to be appointed. I feel that one week is going to be too short of a period of time to really make it available to people to make sure that it comes out in our press releases and our communication. I really would like to extend that to two weeks until the 15th to accept applications. And then put the interviews on the 19th and the 20th. And if we need to have a special meeting that next week, I think that would be fine to do that. Certainly, this is important enough to do so. And as far as onboarding, I'm not sure that we have to bring somebody onboard and begin that process prior to the 28th. There's certainly be a learning curve, but before their first board meeting is not necessarily when we need to do it. So I would be in favor of extending that timeframe to make sure that we're offering as much opportunity as possible for people to have a chance to get their name in the, in the ring if they want to. So I'll throw that out as my first suggestion.
Okay, discussion?
That doesn't fit with our policy would be, "Whenever a vacancy occurs, the board shall fill the vacancy at its next regular meeting or a special meeting, but not earlier than 10 days."
So as I said, there could be a special meeting held the week of the 21st to 25th.
But I think it says at our next regular meeting.
Or special, or special. I don't, I have to flip to it.
So if a regular meeting comes up first, we don't have to do it? I know.
I guess I was reading that, that it needed to be the next.
That's how I interpreted, but that doesn't mean I interpreted it correctly.
Again, my goal is to allow as much participation in the process as we can.
Right. While still staying within the policy. Yeah.
We're looking at Jenny.
Well, I'm looking at OSBA's guidance and it says, "When may a board act to fill the vacancy?" A few courts have held that the phrase "at its next regular or special meeting" is directory and not mandatory and does not require the Board of Ed to appoint a member at the meeting immediately following the resignation. So basically, what they're saying here is it's within the 30 days.
So the next meeting is just the,
The guidelines are fairly fluid. I won't say flexible, I'll say they allow a lot of local discussion.
Interpretation, yeah.
Right.
I'm not, I would think that those who would be interested would still be able to have that application.
Betsy, can you speak about how we're getting this out to the community? Just so we have an idea. Sorry to put you on the spot, I didn't,
No, that's okay. And the plan with the application closing on the 8th is tomorrow morning, I would submit a press release to the Journal News, because that's our local newspaper. And my contact there is, I've given him a heads up, so he's aware that it's coming and will help push that out. We would also post it on our website. We will send an email to all of our parents and our community subscribers to our newsletters. And so, that's roughly 22,000 people. And then, we would also push it out on social media, on Facebook, on Twitter. And we would not just push it out tomorrow on social media, but we will have posts throughout the time. As well as a reminder on the 7th and 8th that the application process closes on the 8th.
And again, one week is a very short period of time. And if our interest is in being as open as possible, I think that application process needs to be as long as possible. I'll tell you, within my experiences, as somewhat dismaying as this is, I've had people who didn't know there was a levy on the ballot until the day they were going to vote.
That's true.
So, again, to make it as open as possible and still stay within our 30 days, I think we allow as much leeway as possible for people to become aware, number one, and then to submit the application.
I mean, obviously, I'm the one that submitted and here and work with legal, that tight timeframe when it comes to that week and just my experience that I've had when it comes to any type of surveys, any type of application processes that you put out there, a tighter timeframe is always better. It gets the most interest because people need to be driven to that deadline. If it lingers for too long, it does just that, it lingers. And I'm sure Betsy can appreciate that with surveys that the district has sent out. I know that she looked at this timeline and felt that was appropriate as well. I probably would be more concerned with our approach to getting the message out there to give people that week notice versus assuming it takes four days for people to hear about it and then having a two-week timeframe. So, I mean, my angle would be, let's keep a tight timeframe, just because I believe it will drive interest. And I do think that if we have that and we've really hit the nail on the head, the people that are truly interested and really want to come to the plate are going to make it a priority and are going to submit their application. And I have full, I have full confidence in our PR department to be able to spin that out there and let people know. Did you mention, I'm sorry if you mentioned this and I didn't hear, will we be doing an all-school email as well?
Yes.
District email?
That would go out as well. I mean, we've already gotten some interest, so it's, I mean, people are aware that it's,
Yeah, we have.
Out there.
And quite frankly, a lot of the channels that you mentioned, Betsy, which are our normal communication channels and I appreciate utilizing those, but a lot of those channels are school community. They're not the broader community. And my concern is, we have very few criteria for being a board member. And certainly, a community member who is not necessarily connected to an individual school has that opportunity to do it as well.
Betsy, how many,
It's a very narrow window to just communicate in that one little area and say that that's going to be,
Well, there's a press release in a week. The press release will reach more. And do we have, how many people get our community, how many community members get our,
I don't have that number off the top of my head. I can do a little calculation on the side here and get that for you.
Would the townships help us with promotion of their social media channels as well?
We'll also be sharing this, this meeting with Westchester TV tomorrow.
Okay.
And they'll post it.
Okay.
Could we push it out if we, like, to the 10th?
That's what I was going to say.
Like noon on the 10th?
Could we add a couple of days?
Have our potentially special meeting if we need to whittle it down the evening of the 10th?
I think that the reason we, another reason we put it on the 8th was because if we knew we wanted to do the interviews on the 12th and 13th, we wanted to give people a runway. However, I also said in that statement too, that if we put the process out there and people assume there's interviews on the 12th and 13th, then they'll do their best to keep that clear, assuming they might come back for an interview. So, I mean, we could push it back to the 10th and do the as-needed special meeting on the 11th and do interviews on the 12th and 13th to be able to make the appointment on the 14th and have them seated on the,
Well, let's talk about that special meeting and the purpose of it.
That would be to review the applicants who submitted an application for us as a board to review them and then make the decision on whether or not, or who we wanted to bring to the interview process. But the reason we keep saying it's as-needed is because if we have 10 people that submitted an application, we might just say, "Yeah, we're bringing all 10 back." If we have 50, we know that that's not going to be possible. So we would need to take the survey results and then be able to bring that back to executive session and have a conversation around who we want to bring back as a group for interviews.
And again, in the interest of transparency and fairness, I believe that anybody that submits an application should have an opportunity for an interview.
What if we get like 200 people?
I guess we'd have to have a few more days of interviews then.
I just, I,
I see that as highly, I see that as highly unlikely that we would have 200 applicants.
But that's why we put the as-needed.
That would have 38 for their, 38 applicants for their two positions.
So why wouldn't you go ahead and interview 38?
I don't think you can get, I don't think you can get 38 in in two days. And I don't think that every single person that sends in an application may be qualified to,
So I guess my question would be, why would do an application process then? Why not just have people submit their name and email and we just call them in to do an interview with them?
Well, it gives you some grounds for your interview, for one thing.
Okay.
And again, in the interest of transparency and fairness, I'm not worried about our convenience. I'm not worried about adding,
None of us are.
I'm not worried about adding extra days if they're needed for interviews. I think that anyone who wants a shot at it, who takes the time to put in an application, should be interviewed.
I'm willing to, I'm willing to say that if there's 15 or less people, we interview everybody. But if there's more than 15, I think that we as a board do the work to understand the applications and who they are and to understand who we want to bring back for an interview at that point.
Yeah. I'm fine with that. I mean, when you, I mean, I know it's not the same, but when you apply for a job, everybody that applies for a job doesn't get an interview on the job.
Again, it's four people making a decision for the entire community and I think that we should be as open and transparent as we possibly can be and fair to anyone who takes the time to apply.
Julie, do you have any comments?
I think that it may become more apparent when we look at, I think it would be who of us to have that, potentially a special meeting and look at the applicant pool at that time. I think we don't need to make that decision at this point in time.
I'm fine with that.
Until we see how many.
So instead of making it as-needed,
A well-defined process, and I don't believe that that's leaving it as a, we'll see what happens then. It's a well-defined process.
You do me a favor, can you articulate to the board and the community what you think a well-defined process is that's not laid out here? Is it just the timeline or are there other elements that you think are missing?
It's the timeline, that's the interview process. Will you be interviewed if you submit an application? What criteria are you,
Which board policy says that we don't have to interview, but we are.
Yeah, board policy.
And I'm glad we're in agreement that we think that's important.
Great.
What criteria are you going to use to cut, say, when we go with your 15 deadline? What criteria are we going to use then for cutting out the 16 to 20, that we get 20 interviews?
Which will be a discussion that we as a board have.
At what point?
At that special meeting.
And executive session.
Executive session.
I'm not sure why we wouldn't go ahead and discuss it now. But honestly, again, transparency and openness about the process.
I think we're trying to hide anything, though.
So are you, are you suggesting that right now, what we do is we have a conversation to the, with the public about who we individually are looking for to sit on the board and what qualifications?
No, not at all, individuals should not be discussed.
Right.
Okay.
But what criteria will you use to cut and decide if I've got 20 applicants and I'm only going to interview 15? How will you narrow that down? In fairness, how will you do that?
I think we have a conversation as four members. We look at the community input through the survey that we have. We sit down, we look at the applications and we start to have a conversation about who we have on the board, what gap we think needs to be filled to go for the next year and a half. We have a collegial conversation about that. I think that if we start applying metrics to it, I think that that's, that's too rigid. That's not going to allow us to get the best member to serve with us.
And I don't have that feedback.
But if you're not going to interview everyone, you are going to be applying metrics to it.
We're going to be applying conversation that we are having around the applications and the people that have applied. We have no idea who's applied, we don't know their backgrounds, we don't know the community survey results. To Julie's point, you know, having that as-needed meeting, I think is really important because we'll know, we'll have more data and we'll know at that point who's applied. I mean, the reality is, it's an appointment and it's an appointment that, yes, all four of us are going to have a decision. It's going to be a majority vote for that, but it's not an elected position as well. And so, we have a unique opportunity right now to think about the four of us, who we represent, what we bring to the table, and at a better rate, understand who would be a good balance to this board. And that can only occur after we know who the applicants are.
Again, I don't see that as a fair process when it's not upfronted. People know they will be interviewed or not. But let's go on and ask some more questions about the details. You had mentioned that applications will only be accepted online?
Not only, but they'll be able to be submitted online so they don't have to take the extra step of printing it and mailing it. But if somebody wants to drop it off at Central Office or mail it in, they are more than welcome to do that.
And I think we need to be clear as we post that, that all of those methods are acceptable, especially for those who might not have technology, as hard as that may be to believe. What about, what exactly are we looking for? Is it just an application? Is it a letter of intent? Is it a resume?
It's an application that they're going to be submitting. It's the one that you gave us from OSBA.
Are we asking for anything else to go with that? Is everyone in agreement with that?
Again, we wanted to have a very clear process. We wanted to have something that has been used across the state. And so, when you sent this information, I thought it would be a good, a good toolkit.
I thought it was a good baseline.
So it has, the application will have name, address, phone number, employment history is on it. The school, if they have university studies, they can put it on there. References, ask if they're 18 years older, are they a registered voter in the school district? Obviously, have to ask the question about if they've been arrested or convicted of a felony. Do they have school-aged children? Do you have children to attend? And is any member of your immediate family an employee of the school system? And then there's the signature component on it. I'm happy to include, if people want to include a resume and accept that as,
I was going to say, if they want to include a resume, I think that's fine.
And it does have references.
It has places for references.
It does have spot for references.
And perhaps we could say mandatory is the application. You may also include a resume and a letter of intent.
Sure.
Yeah.
I think a lot of this could be superseded by a resume. You know, they could substitute a resume for most, a lot of the information that's on here.
But the application needs to be filled out, though. Like, I think it needs to be fully filled out and if they attach the resume, that's great. The only question that isn't, that didn't get transferred over that I noticed was, The only question that isn't, that didn't get transferred over that I noticed was, um, if they are part of any civic or professional organization memberships. So we should probably add that on there. I think that was just a miss on the one that the Lakota people typed up, but they, they're just looking at the OSBA one.
I think community involvement is very important.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
Can we talk about the interview process itself? Will those be in person? Will they be, which frankly, I think adds a whole different layer to it that would be helpful. Or will they be Zoom meetings? What are we thinking?
Um, it's my intention, um, through this that we would do them in person.
Yeah, I would agree. I would.
And we could do them in an environment like this where we're socially distant and somebody be able to come in and talk to the board and interview the board. And then using the OSBA questions that were submitted in here, um, by us each identifying our top five and then coming to a consensus about which ones we would go with.
Will we offer the option if someone is concerned about?
Sure.
COVID to do a virtual?
Uh, I would suggest that we.
Does anyone have an objection? Objection?
I would suggest we all are in this room and then we can Zoom them in. And I was told we can put faces up here. Um, we can do it that way.
We're still in the same room and they're just gonna be zoomed in.
I mean, that would be my suggestion.
If that's, I think that's easier.
We, we can modify whatever we would need to do for a virtual interview if you so needed to do that.
I'm fine being flexible with that as everybody else is.
Somebody's uncomfortable. I'm like you, Linda. I agree. I would rather do it in person.
And I think it just is.
It adds another dimension.
It, it is. Again, I'm going to, um, restate one more time that in the interest of fairness, I would give interviews to anyone who applies. And I would say upfront that we were doing that. And I would like to extend the application process as long as we possibly can and still staying within the 30-day window. I think both of those are very important in terms of being transparent and being accessible and inclusive of anyone who wants to be a part of the process.
I'm willing to, um, I'm willing to consider the fact that we, uh, keep the time, to keep the timeline as it is. But if we get to the 8th and we don't feel like we've had significant interest, um, we talk about extending the deadline and readjusting our dates. But I would move that we move forward with the date structure that exists here.
I, I would like, I would err on the side of if we're going to extend it, I would not want to extend it any more than the 10th and have the special meeting on the 11th and keep the interviews the 12th and 13th.
If you withdraw your motion, I'll make one for that timeline.
We don't need a motion and we don't need a vote on this.
Well, I think we should have an agreement on it.
We can, but we don't need a vote on it. I don't, my personal opinion is if we push back to the 10th, what, two days isn't? I mean, no offense, I just, I just don't think two days is going to shift the momentum one way or the other.
As I said, I would move it to the 15th and allow for two weeks for applications to be accepted.
Julie, do you have thoughts around it?
I think that's too long. I think anybody who's going to be interested is gonna. I just, I worry about that timeline.
Doesn't give you a lot of breathing room as well. If 2020's taught us anything. Things could get crazy.
So we have to come to some sort of agreement, correct?
Well, I mean, I, I, what I'm hearing is you're fine with the timeline. Obviously, this is the timeline I submitted and I told you the reasons why we did that with Legos. We felt that the tight timeframe was the better option to get the interest of the community. We know, again, if you extend, um, extend surveys or whatever, it tends to linger. And you don't necessarily, people, people linger and they don't submit to the last minute.
I feel like we putting a lot of pressure on Betsy, but I feel like, you know, with all of the avenues that we're gonna take to put it out there, that if you're interested, you're gonna have enough time between first and the 8th, but.
Well, again, this is not a survey. It's far more important than a survey. Not that I don't appreciate the information we get from the surveys, but this is a far more important process for people making a determination on a representative that they don't vote on. And I strongly disagree with a one-week timeline for the application process. I do not feel that's fair and I don't feel it's transparent.
Why don't we extend till the 10th? Is that, sorry?
I, I mean, I'm fine with that. Again, I, I don't, I don't think two days is going to be this miracle, you know?
But it is give them a couple more days.
And I will eat crow if we have 42 people apply within a two-day timeframe. Um, I am against the two-week spread because I want the tight compact.
Yeah.
I think it's what's healthy for the district. Um, and I disagree that it looks like we're not, um, we're not being transparent. We're not being, I think we have a defined process that this calendar can go out. Our PR department is amazing of getting information out. Michael Clark is amazing at helping us get stuff out. I think, um, with the community, they deserve to have somebody seated and doing business rather than this lingering through that full 30 days when it's not necessary. So I, I, I am happy we can move it back to the 10th. Um, but we have to all agree that we'll hold a special meeting on that Friday, the 11th.
Or even if we want to close it during the day on the 10th and do it the evening of the 10th, I'm fine with that.
I think you would have to go to midnight on the 10th.
Yeah, okay.
Or you're essentially closing it on the 9th.
Okay, right.
I mean, people work and, um.
Right. Yeah. Oh, I think you have to go to midnight too, if you're gonna extend it. I'm fine with that, doing that, given it a couple of extra days. But agreed that we have to meet on the 11th. We have to make sure that our calendars are available on the 11th to.
Are you two avail, does that, or?
The 11th, does that work for you guys?
It just needs to be, they don't need to be in that meeting.
Oh, that's right. They don't have to.
They don't have to be there.
Okay, so we adjust.
Yep. I'm sorry, the questions.
Sure.
We're gonna go over, we're gonna each pick our top five and submit them. Is that what?
Yeah, I thought the fairest way that we could do this is they've already generated the 18 questions on here without spending five hours of, um, us arguing over what's an appropriate question or not because we're never going to agree on what question should be asked. I'll just throw that out there and people can disagree, yell at me. Um, I thought we could take the 18 questions, submit our top five that we think are most impactful, and then I can take those, correlate them. And if it ends up being eight to 10, that's fine. We can ask those and keep to a timeframe. If you want to give five and submit additional questions, I can throw those on as well and we can wrestle with those again. But again, um, I think that if we're all to sit down and start proposing questions, they would be all over the board and we would get nowhere. And so these 18, again, have been used around the state of Ohio with school districts who've done this. And they're tried, true, and proven, and they can't be argued.
Well, this is why they have these. This is why OSBA puts these things out there to make this process.
Yep.
For us, because I can't imagine it is a.
Yep.
Process that people, the boards do all the time.
That's what I would suggest is that through this timeframe, now that we extended through the 10th during that time, the board takes the opportunity to read through those questions, really think about the questions and what are the five that resonate the most with you, that you believe will bring forth the discussion that you want to hear in those interview, interviews. Um, and then obviously I'll look at how everybody rated them. I'm assuming we'll probably come up with similar in the top five.
Right.
Um, but if there are some outliers, I can submit to everybody, these are all the questions that, um, when I correlated, they came up with. And in full transparency, I will release all what everybody wanted to ask so that I'm not accused of, um, coming up with questions on my own. I will make sure that's released.
And I'm also, like, five could go pretty quick, depending upon how quickly people answer. So I'm wondering if we should maybe rank 10.
Well, so what my thought was, if we all submit five, we're not going to all hit the same five. And so I'll probably generate, like I said, between eight and 10 that we'll bring to the table. That would probably capture everybody's heart around what they, what they see to be questions. Does that make sense?
Hopefully.
Okay.
Hopefully, we don't think that.
Well, I mean, but if not, I mean, we'll also have, I, I'll have the whole list available.
Okay.
And we can start at one, and then when the timeframe's done, you know, I mean, we could, we could figure that out as well as we go through them. Um, I think just obviously HR interviewing processes, things like that, you have to be fair as well within that and not give some questions of one candidate or the other. So, um, obviously we can.
Have the same question.
Right, right.
To be fair.
But again, you're right. We need to, uh, make sure we have enough questions provided.
Yeah, five doesn't seem like a lot.
So again, in the interest of transparency and openness and fairness, I would like to make a motion. Would the board consider interviewing all applicants that apply?
Do I have a second?
I would like to wait until we see the number of applicants before we consider that, given how many, we don't know how many we have.
Okay.
See if we need a screen.
All right. So motion failed, so we will accept the process that's here. Um, we will adjust the dates to the 10th and then create a special meeting for the 11th. I'm looking at Betsy as she's going to be documenting this. Um, and then we'll move forward with, um, interviews on the 12th and 13th based on the number of people that we come up with on the 11th at that special meeting.
I do have an answer to Linda's question. Um, we have just over 1,500 community subscribers. It's 1,508. And then the thought exchange question that will go out for the same timeframe that the application is open is what qualification should the Lakota Board of Education consider when appointing a new member? So we will close that on the 10th. And then on the 11th, we'll generate a report and I will share that with all of you so that you'll be able to see the top rated, well, you'll be able to see all of the, the qualifications that people have submitted. But the ones that people agree on the most will bubble to the top.
Perfect. And we've used thought exchange with the community and we've had a ton of success with it. We find across the community, um, it's very well received. And it's actually been a really great way to be able to tap into community voice without having to bring them to a physical room through our community conversations and et cetera. So hopefully we can get a good response on this as well.
So, Betsy, beyond the 1,500 community members and the internal school community, how will that work, you know?
I'm sorry, can you, beyond the community?
It's a little husky. Beyond the 1,500 community members that would receive that and the internal school community that receives that, how does the broader community get notified this position exists? They have an opportunity to apply and that all happens within 10 days?
So tomorrow morning, I will send a press release to Michael Clark. He is on standby waiting for it. He will publish it and post it online. And then we will share it via email to all of our subscribers. We will share it on our website. We'll also put it out in district notes for the, um, individual school newsletters that go out on Friday. We will share it via social media, so on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram, and link back to the article on our website so that everybody can get to the application process. We'll also share it in our newsletter that will go out next Tuesday. And throughout now and the 10th, we will be pushing it out on social media.
Next Tuesday would be on the 8th?
Yes.
And so you'll also be connecting with the townships as well?
Absolutely.
To get them to promote on their social media pages.
Yep. And then of course, you know, you want to encourage our community to share it.
Right.
Whether it goes on the neighbor's page or share it with their friends, word of mouth, that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, any, any further discussion? All right, that moves us to item number four, superintendent's item. A is to affirm OTES 2.0 possibly will be adopted but not active until the 21, 22 school year. Do I have a motion? Is this an approval?
It is an approval. It's a second reading and, and I'm asking you to approve this tonight, um, knowing that it could change next couple of months as more legislation takes place.
I was going down that path, but then you were giving me a look when I said motion. I'm gone.
Yes.
Uh, do I have a motion to approve, um, item A and superintendent items?
My move.
Second.
All right, discussion? I just, oh, sorry, go for it.
I'm a bit puzzled what I received unless I somehow did not have the right draft. This is an incomplete policy draft, rough draft, which we normally get at the start of a policy process. And there are many checkmarks to be made still within this draft that have not been made on behalf of the local district. So it seems very incomplete to me.
Let me pull it up.
I was saying, because the one that I.
I was gonna say the one I have.
I printed it yesterday. So our agenda changed very drastically this morning. We added quite a few things to it and I don't know if there was a new draft that was put up.
What did we add to the?
So on last night's agenda, the only thing that we had was actually the policy. We did not have the reopening of schools, the proposed milliken interchange, or the board member appointment on the agenda as of yesterday.
That is correct. I changed it this morning to update it and reflect it to what it should look like. You are correct.
So, then back to the policy, which was the original question. The draft that's attached is not a complete draft. There are many places where we have not made decisions on individual portions of this, but we're voting on it as a completed policy. Even though the implementation is delayed, the draft is not a complete draft. Do you see what I'm talking about?
I do now. But this says will be adopted but not active.
But we're making a decision to adopt an incomplete policy. So I wonder if we could have that completed and then tabled until the next meeting, until those choices have been made?
I know we have a timeline issue with this one.
September 1. So this is pushing, so this, this was all part of COVID.
It is all COVID.
So this was an order by the governor and we've been waiting for it to come down. And it was basically, um, we were supposed, yeah, would you mind checking it with Rob? But, um, so OTES 2.0 by law was supposed to be rolled out this year, this fall. But due to COVID and the teacher evaluation system, they gave districts the option of either implementing it this fall or pushing it back to next fall. And so we had made the decision to push it back because we could do that. And so this policy, that's why I'm quickly viewing it, um, it should just say that we are adopting it, but we're not implementing it.
I understand that. And I have no disagreement with delaying the implementation for a year. My concern is that we don't have a complete policy. There are a number of choices to be made still in the process.
I saw the completed one.
So did I?
And it's possible, it's possible that this did not get updated and yet we're voting on this.
I thought.
And I can't support an incompletive policy that I don't know what choices we've made.
Even though it's for 20, and I, and I get that, even though it's for 21, 22.
Still an approved policy.
Right. Well, I, I agree with that.
But we have the complete policy.
I'm actually looking.
I remember seeing the complete policy somewhere. I might look it, I might look it up on Board Docs.
I'm not gonna be able to find it on my phone. I'd have to get in my email.
Give me a second.
Um, it, they came out last Monday or Tuesday. Rob sent them out, I believe.
Yep.
Yeah, because it was. Yeah, the one I saw was a, a real policy. I don't know. It's different.
In fact, the first paragraph is this is only a policy template. It requires numerous and important local choices prior to finalization and any subsequent revisions.
Yeah, again, I don't think this is the, this is the right one.
I think the wrong document was uploaded.
Right.
Yeah, what I think too. Wrong one got attached.
I mean, even though we would be past the deadline, I would feel better about pulling it anyway.
Yeah.
And we'll take.
Because this isn't the one that.
And, and again, I bet at lunch that this is gonna get changed between.
It will be.
Then anyway.
It will.
So it's.
It's another moving target.
I think it's worth us, um, trying to find the right one right now.
I don't remember who it came from. It wasn't, it wasn't Rob. It was somebody else, but it doesn't make a difference. Um.
Is it not worth?
I mean, worst case, we, uh, yeah, can we vote at a special meeting?
Yeah.
If we end up having the 11th, so we could do it on the 11th and just vote on it.
Just add it to the agenda then.
That's fine.
It's fine. It's not a big.
But I, I do know that we saw the one, so most likely the wrong document has been uploaded.
I think the wrong document's been attached because I remember seeing one that was not.
Yeah.
I think I looked it up on Board Docs.
Okay.
Yep. But again, that's, that's just a standard from legislator telling us what we can and can't do with OTES now.
Right.
But there's quite a bit of individual information that needs to be done on behalf of the district.
And that was done. It's just the, yeah, wrong document uploaded. All right, uh, that moves us on to the.
You did have a motion.
I did, you're right.
Second, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So we'll table that motion. We table it or just vote it down?
I mean, you can, you can vote it down. But you do have a, you have a motion. You can make another motion to table it or, but.
I'm fine.
The motion.
We can just vote it down and then.
Just vote it.
Yep. Uh, Danielle, please call roll.
This is Casper.
No.
This is Schaefer.
No.
No.
This is O'Connor.
No.
For Level.
No. All right, that moves us on to our public comment section of the evening. Just as a reminder to our community that, um, each, uh, community member may, gets three minutes. We, up to 45 minutes for public comment section. You just state your name. You just state your address. Um, we do start with our public comment that was submitted during public hot, or via email at publiccomments@lakotaonline.com.
Start with those in the room first?
We do start with those in person in the room because we started that at the last meeting. So if there's anybody in the room that would like to make public comment, you may step up to the podium and state your name and address. Okay, seeing none, um, we then go to email. Um, Ms., Mrs. Fuller will read our two, I believe, two emails that we received.
Correct. The first, um, public comment is from Thomas Wells, 7981 Dorsetshire, Westchester, Ohio, 45069. With the remote learning going on, is it possible for community members to audit the classes? This would facilitate parent conversations about the school day and help the community be connected to the schools.
Okay, thank you.
And then our second one is from Megan Saad, 8020 King Fisher Lane, Westchester Township, 45069. I'm wondering when Lakota will release the academic calendar for the next year, 2021, 2022. Many families are having to make adjustments to family travel plans, specifically winter and spring break due to COVID, but need the dates for the next year to facilitate rebooking requirements many travel companies are imposing. In past years, the calendar has already been shared.
Okay. All right. Um, Adam, do we have any, um, anybody raising their hand virtually? Okay, uh, Emily Jackson?
Hi, um, it's Emily, 9571 McCully Road.
Sorry.
First.
You saw everybody take a step back. Uh, you're good now. Thank you.
Oh, sorry, was I screaming?
No, it wasn't you. It was more in the room. So you're, you're good.
Um, do I need to say my address again or my?
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sure you guys have it on file 100 times. So first, um, I just appreciate the dialogue that you guys had, um, about the open timeframes for the application. I do think people who want to work in Lakota only have, um, a week to 10 days to apply on the website. So actually opening up for 10 days is similar and kind of complies with, you know, with the hiring practices if that helps anybody feel better about it, since you guys were kind of a difference of opinion. Um, secondly, my main question is for Matt. Um, with Miami University having a spike in Corona cases, they could, they went, we're going from a, per capita of a 93.96 on 820 to a 106.75 on 827. So we know they have 100 cases pending and that could potentially put us into the red. Are we communicating with the Butler County Health Department to identify that the public schools for elementary children and high school kids in Butler County are actually complying so that she won't think about closing us because of Miami's actions? And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. All right, Adam, do we have anybody else? Okay, Darcy?
Hi, I'm Darcy Brand. I'm 5119 Aspenwood Drive. Can you hear me okay?
You sure can.
Okay, I just have a couple of comments. One is, um, I'm disappointed in the communication of COVID numbers. Um, I would like to see the, to be more transparent in that. And I, I, I would like to make one comment around that. We, the parent community finds out rather quickly. I knew by Saturday morning that there were three cases in the first week. And my question, well, my comment is, do you want us to control the conversation or do you like to control the conversation? And I would like to know, I have three kids in the district, well, two kids this year in the district. And I would like to know what schools have COVID and, because I'm sending children to school and I want to evaluate on a daily basis, my comfort level was sending them to school. Um, my second comment is what kind of improvements are gonna be made from the survey? It doesn't seem like there was a lot of difference between the first one and the second one. So I would be interested to see what you're improving. And my third comment would be, I would like to see a little bit more transparency on the decision making. So I understand this is very fluid and there are things that are logistically impossible, but there were things that have been made, comments that have been made previously that did not come to fruition. And I'm sure that there's a reason behind it and I don't question that reason necessarily, but it would be nice to be communicated that, why that decision was made. So for example, this decision was made because we found it logistically impossible to do A, B or C. And that would be a nice, um, element to understand and why some of those decisions are made. Oh, that my, my last comment is, by the way, um, when you asked for applications to come to the central office, I was a, at the central office the day before school started and it was impossible to find anyone to return a document to because the central office is closed.
Okay. Um, thank you for your comments. Really quick though, before we get off the line, if there are specific things that you feel like you've been told that haven't been, uh, maybe communicated wrong, um, it'd be great if you could email those to Mr. Miller just so we can kind of calibrate and understand a little bit more with, um, what you're referring to when it comes to the transparency on the decision making.
Sure, and I could tell you if you want to know now.
Why don't you give us one example?
Uh, one example, my, my biggest concern is the transition in the high school between classes. Uh, the locker situation, there's no social distancing and there's no social distancing in the hallways as the kids are transitioning. And I realize that that's a five minute maybe period and maybe there was some additional information from the health department that said that maybe that was low risk. I don't know, but it, it, to me as a parent, that's very concerning, those time periods.
Thank you for that clarification. We appreciate it, Darcy. All right, Adam, do we have another? Vanessa Wells, Vanessa?
Okay, can you hear me?
You sure can.
Okay, so, uh, it's Vanessa Wells, 4487 Aspenwood Drive. Um, first off, I wanted to say thanks to all of you. It's been really hard. Beginning of this year is completely different than yours. Um, there's been a few concerns and challenges.
Vanessa, we're having a hard time hearing you.
Okay.
You, you're kind of going in and out.
Okay, is that any better?
Yeah, yeah, keep talking.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, so one of the biggest concerns. Is this still happening?
Yeah, it sure is.
Try anyway.
Yeah, just keep talking. We'll see if we can piece, piece together.
Okay. Um, so I'm just gonna skip actually. Okay, in regards to VLO and the Zoom lessons. Um, a lot of parents appreciate having the optional Zoom lessons, but what they're finding, whenever their kids do go into the lessons, it's that they're maybe two or three kids, which makes it feel a little awkward for the students to ask the questions. Um, and maybe they're a little bit shorter. So I was just wondering if we could suggest maybe that teachers do like a live lesson or even a recorded session with the classrooms. That way they can go in and watch almost with the classroom experience a little bit. Um, another question, how does the curriculum department decide if a source of education that we're using for the kids is a little too biased politically? Um, we recently had an assignment for advanced language arts that was very biased against, uh, Trump, which I understand we're going through a lot in the world right now. Um, but at least I'm not sure that that's a thing that's relevant to seventh grade. Um, my last thing. So I, I really appreciate, you know, all of you justifying and putting your reasons out there for why you're doing the application process for the vacancies that you are. Um, I really appreciate the compromise, the extension of the two day period. Uh, but Brad, I did have a question on one of your comments and that was that you guys never agree on what questions will be asked. So you're coming up with your top five. Um, so how do you plan on narrowing down the applicants if you can never agree on questions? Um, is there gonna be some basis of, okay, are you gonna do it each depending on the amount of people you get? Uh, so I guess my question is there, how do you plan on addressing that if you can't? You know, if you're openly stating any of the questions? And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your comments. Adam, is there anybody else? Kate Rusty?
Good evening. Rusty Jesse, 6564 Justice Lane, Liberty Township. First of all, good evening, everyone. Uh, first of all, I'd like to, uh, I'm thankful that you guys send the surveys out. Matt, my daughter who's a junior, I think she really enjoys being able to give her, uh, opinion on her daily environment. And as all of you said, I hear about masks and no breaks. And I think the next thing you're gonna hear about is block. Uh, be a block every day once the mask thing is, is kind of settled in like Brad was talking about earlier. Uh, because some kids don't do good. One of Kate's friends already withdrew from in school because physically she couldn't sit for an hour and a half. You know, she's literally, she has health concerns, so she had to go to LO. So that's one thing that might be on the horizon down the road. As to the, uh, the vacancy created by Todd's resignation, I agree with Linda and Julie. I'd extended it out to the 11th. I mean, if somebody's out of town this week or they have a death and a funeral, there's, it's holiday weekend, there's no school next Tuesday. That's all stuff you have to take into consideration. Uh, I know people that, you know, apply, they may have to talk to their HR department at work to make sure they can become involved. Cause not every company is gonna want people out there sitting in front of a table with internet access all the time. Uh, so that'll take a few days. I think depending upon when the form becomes available, if it's not available tomorrow morning, first thing, it's, you know, I know it's not a complicated form. I'm sure the, the IT group will put it out very promptly, but that's something guys have to consider there. Like you Brad about limiting the number of folks that talk to you. If you have 50 people, 15 should be fine. If you have 18 applying, maybe it's all 18, you know? We also know that between now and when you actually get around to scheduling stuff, people may change their minds about wanting to do it. So, um, and the only other thing I believe is that if someone has lost an election to be on the school board, I don't, you know, like I was saying, they were, they had their opportunity to represent all of us. And the community obviously picked you four and Todd over that individual. I think that person should be, held in very high consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate it. Okay, uh, seeing no more comments virtually, uh, we'll move and, um, answer some of these questions. So, um, my note, official note takeover here.
Audit any classes was the first one, Matt, that Tom Wells wanted to know if parents could audit the classes.
He said as a community member, I'm sure he's a parent, but, um, he, I have his phone number. So I'll give him a call and see what he's trying to, um, find out. So I'll give him a call tomorrow if that's okay.
And the academic calendar, we're releasing that?
Yeah, that should, we already approved that last.
We did, we've already.
Time, so I'm sure it'll be up on the website soon.
We'll put it up tomorrow or something. Um, Emily Jackson about, you're communicating with the Butler County that we're doing everything we can, so.
She brought, she brought a good point. The actual number that I heard today was Miami University, um, identified 400 students that tested positive. There's also a large facility, um, in the Monroe area that has a high number of, um, cases. So we could go red this week or next week. Um, but that's another good reason why we did not tie our decision for Plan A, B or C, um, to the cases or to gov, the governor's color coding system because of cases like that. Um, we don't have, um, the uptick and hopefully we don't, um, that what Miami and some of those other facilities have. So, um, if, if we do go red and it's not, um, you know, Liberty Township or Westchester or Lakota schools, I think we'll be fine with what we're doing now.
Okay, Darcy Brand, the, the COVID transparency, she's disappointed in the numbers and the transparency of the COVID and wants to know what school has COVID.
Yeah.
We talked about that earlier.
We, we had talked about that earlier, so it's part of the presentation. We had a student at, um, Heritage and we have a student at East and I believe that's it, that's been confirmed now.
Going forward, we will have that information on the dashboard, correct?
And we'll have a dashboard that's coming out. We have new information coming out on Wednesday.
Um, she wants to know what improvements you have made based on the surveys.
Um, I looked at a couple of them up above that we're working on some new guidelines in terms of social distancing that came up a little bit in the survey, um, that I mentioned earlier tonight. Masks have not been a problem, um, kind of tied to Mr. Jesse's comment to, I didn't even think about that 90 minute period being a hardship on some kids. So that's another reason to have a mask break, um, in the middle of that, so.
And the passing in the hallway was one of her examples at the high school. Um, she said, is there any information from the health department that? I believe I read somewhere in the millions of things that are out there to read, that if they're passing in the hallway within a five minute range, they, it's, that's a low risk exposure.
It is a low risk exposure. The other thing that we did is we let, um, particularly our high schools, um, have some more passing time to go into their schedule so it wasn't as tight as what it was before. So if we have to expand that, we can.
And the comment about central office.
About that.
Being closed.
Should, shouldn't it have been closed?
Central office has been opened. If she's referring to anything as far as, um, anything to be submitted through the welcome center, we have changed that process to be, and we did that when COVID started. We've, um, everything is virtual now and so all of those things can be submitted online. So, but if people are bringing them to the central office, we are taking their papers and scanning them in for them. So.
We have a drop off box.
We have a trial box. I'm not sure. I would have to speak to her to find out exactly what the particulars of that situation were, but. No.
And Vanessa Wells had some concerns about the VLO lessons and being able to hear them and could they be recorded and?
Yeah, I would say, um, I can talk to Mr. Coney about that. Um, the question too about politics, um, I was on a chain of emails with her and the teacher and it looks like it was addressed by the teacher, but, um, I'll follow up on that tomorrow as well.
Was the curriculum one about the assignment? Okay, and.
Can I, can I interject really quick? If, if people or parents have questions or concerns about, um, VLO content curriculum, just like in person content curriculum, what is their best approach to address that?
There is an email that they can use vlo@lakotaonline.com that is manned by a team. Um, and they channel the questions to the appropriate person. That's the, the best thing to do.
Kind of keeps up, the, the, saves them a step from asking us and then we have to, you know.
It's more timely and.
Helps them save a step that way.
Team approach.
To be able to find out their answers quickly and wants to know how we're gonna narrow down applicants if we can't narrow down the questions.
Yeah, again, um, my, the process that I presented was a formal process that was presented by OSBA, which is our professional association. My comment about the questions and finding the right questions to ask, it would be a long, long process and, um, it could be biased based on one of us and what we want to ask individually. And if we are operating as four collectively, there are a list of 18 questions here that have been generated. My guess would be by legal in some way, shape or form and that we should really anchor into those and give people opportunity. As it relates to the interview process, again, I think we need to see the applicants, understand who the applicants are to then as a board wrestle with those applicants that understand better who we want to bring forward for an interview. And to Mr. Jesse's point, um, I completely agree. No, I don't think we should bring 200 people back. If it's 18, we have that discussion.
Right.
Right? That's fine. I think we, until we know the number and the amount of people that have stepped forward, um, that's a difficult decision to make.
And then Mr. Jesse's was just mom comments. I don't believe there was a question in there. And I think that's it.
Great. Um, that moves us on to adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Logan?
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
This is Schaefer?
Yes.
This is Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes. Thank you.